An item that's not on the agenda that I'm going to throw out first, I want to introduce Joe Cole as the new trustee to the village board.
Thank you very much, everybody. Happy New Year and I hope I do well.
For you. Okay. So beginning tonight with a public hearing regarding the adoption of proposed 24 to 25 budget, can I have a reading of the proof of publication?
Notice is hereby given that the tentative budget for the village of Baldensville for fiscal year beginning March 1, 2024, including general village funds, has been completed and filed in the office of the village clerk, 16 West Madison Street, Baldensville, New York, where it is available for inspection by any interested person during office hours. The Board of Trustees of the village of Baldensville shall hold a public hearing on said tentative budget on January 4, 2024, at 7:30 PM at the village hall, 16 West Madison Street, Baldensville, New York, showing such changes, alterations, and revisions as shall have been made therein by the Board of Trustees. At such hearing, any person may be heard in favor or against the tentative budget as compiled or for against any item or items therein contained. The following are the proposed salaries of certain village officers of the village. The compensation proposed in said budget for the mayor is $15,300 per year, $7,650 per year for the deputy mayor, $1,100 per year for each trustee, and $23,721 for the village justice. Residents have the right to provide written and oral comments and ask questions concerning the entire budget and the relationships of entitlement funds to the entire budget. Handicapped persons or senior citizens who require assistance in attending said public hearing or furnishing comments and suggestions should contact the undersigned village clerk to request such assistance dated December 21, 2023.
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposed budget? Is there anyone wishing to speak?
I'm not sure. I'd like to speak in favor of it, but I don't know if I have to be a resident to speak.
I don't know. I'm speaking as a resident, as a treasurer.
Yeah.
Which are you doing?
A resident.
Go ahead, Mark.
I think it's important, though, I am the treasurer, but I am also a resident and I pay taxes in the village. But I wanted to speak in favor of it for a couple of reasons, and mainly just an explanation of how we arrived at where we are with this budget in the times that we're in right now in this economy and in New York State. We have been able to keep the, first of all, we're able to live within the tax cap in New York State. We don't have to, but we've done that, and we've done it for several years. So our tax levy is increasing about one and a half percent, I think, which is within the 2% tax cap, and I take the cap also this year because of extraordinary retirement expenses at the state level was even a little bit, we had a little more room than that. But we still lived within the tax cap. That's number one. Number two, tax rate increase for residents in the village will be fractionally 9.9 something cents per thousand, let's call it 10 cents a thousand, in the village. The average assessed value in the village is below $200,000. It's in the mid 100s, I think, maybe in the low 100s. So that's not a big tax increase for people. And I say those things understanding that the expenses of the village have, in some cases, gone up significantly. Health insurance, as I'm sure is happening for everybody in the workforce and, you know, just in general in the public, our health insurance premiums here are going up somewhere in the neighborhood of 13 or 14%. The state retirement systems are at, I think they told us, a 40-year high for the premiums that we have to pay. So our mortgage tax revenue is down because the mortgage market is down because of the rate situation now. And I think that's probably, those are probably the three biggest hits that we've taken, and they're substantial hits. And when you consider that the levy can only go up by 1, 1.5, 1.7% or something, we had to scrounge around to make the budget balance. So that's just, I guess it's just an informational point. I would encourage everybody to ask questions if you'd like and support the board and the budget for this year. Thanks.
What was the date that it was open to review through? When can we get in and read that?
Well, the 21st, it was there.
It's been online since the 21st of December, and there's been printed copies here since then. So, which is kind of a state, New York state calendar, I think, for our fiscal year beginning. Well, we have to approve the budget by the end of January, I think. Not sure if that's... Yeah. And so there's like a calendar timetable that comes from the state. We have to have it publicly available by the 20th or 21st of December, something like that.
Okay. Thank you for the explanation, Mr. Treasurer, and the support, Mr. Baker. Is there anyone wishing to speak against the budget proposal? Hearing no one, they have a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing. Please, Mark. All, Baker?
I agree.
Passed. Okay, is it seven? Yes, we got it. We'll now have a public hearing to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year. Could I have a reading of the proof of publication?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 7-706 of the village law of the state of New York and pursuant to resolution the village board of the village of Baldensville adopted December 21, 2023, a public hearing will be held by the village board of the village of Baldensville at the village hall, 16 West Madison Street, Baldensville, New York, 13027, on the 4th day of January 2024, 7:35 PM, to consider a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year pursuant to the authority granted in subdivision 5 of general municipal law 3-C. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party by contacting the office of the village clerk, by order of the village board of the village of Baldensville dated December 21, 2023, Baldensville, New York.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? This must be our treasurer's resume.
Same capacity, just Mark Baker, 20 cents of tariffs. And really, just as a matter of explanation, because this comes up every year, we are not, as municipality, going to exceed the tax cap. The state kind of backhandedly encourages us to pass this kind of a resolution, and when we asked them about this, I asked them about it a couple of years ago when I first became treasurer, they said, "If you've made a mistake," and we find it, like this summer or something like that, coming in and doing a routine exam, and you've passed the proposal to exceed the tax cap, then you're fine. But if you haven't passed that, then they get all like, "You should have passed it." So, and it's been this awkward thing that we passed this and then...
Historically, what do we do?
Well, we've rescinded it in the past afterwards, and there was one auditor in here when I first started, and he said he shouldn't rescind it. He said, and I said, "What's the repercussion for exceeding the tax cap?" He goes, "There isn't one." I'm like, "Well, then, why is there a tax cap?"
It's really flirty.
Other people have told me that there are repercussions, and I really haven't drilled down to find out what that's about, but we can talk about rescinding it down the road a little bit here once we get through the budget process and all that, and whether or not, that's a wise thing to do.
Mark, historically, have we exceeded the...
Ever. No, not the village of Baldensville.
Yeah, I mean, not while I've been here, at least, and I haven't looked at records prior to me, so I honestly, I don't know. These guys have been here a long time.
It was only a taxpayer resident. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against the proposal? Hearing none, they have a motion to adjourn and close the public hearing.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carried. Now we'll move on to the regular meeting of the village board. Could I have approval of the village board meeting's minutes from December 21, 2023?
Vote.
Second.
Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? All in favor? Opposed? Carry. Moving on to public comment. Are there any citizens wishing to speak to the board this evening? If you would give us your name, your address.
Jim Dale, 70, Oswego Street. I had a couple of questions about the downtown revitalization initiative. What was the status? I was reading through some of the minutes, and I know that back in, just prior to the pandemic, things didn't proceed, but the state's going to have funding for 2024. There will be, there's another Main Street grant just came out in the last 24 hours and put forward.
Good timing for me, then. And Villages will be taking advantage of whatever it is?
Yes. Typically, we run, you know, I haven't even looked at the whole application thing, but typically that will go through the codes office.
Okay.
And I was going to address it later, but, you know, it's a program where there's a match, and in the past, it depends on how many applicants there are, it determines the size of the match.
Okay.
We are having a challenge with people who applied for grants and tied up funds three-plus years ago and have not completed those projects.
Does that mean that they were awarded the funds and then they went out?
They haven't been awarded, no, they haven't given the funds. It's a reimbursement. You spend, they give you back your percentage. But there are people that have not even started the projects that they applied for. So that money, the money that county's holding, the portion to give them, is tied up because it's obligated. So we're trying to clean that up, and I will not support an application for somebody that has not closed out existing grants. I'm only one person on the board, so.
A little bit of sense there. Okay, that was my... Thank you. But codes office has all the information.
Hi, Vicki Freylo, 15 Charlotte Street. I'm here to speak about the item C, putting a referendum on the March ballot to ask the question that we should move elections from March to November. I was here for November 16 meeting when Sarah Baker so eloquently presented the proposal, heard everyone's opinions, pro and con. I appreciate everyone's opinions, and I'm not going to reiterate any of the pros or cons tonight. I just want to remind the board that your vote tonight is not whether you personally support moving elections to November, but whether you think legal residents should have a voice in that, and I encourage you to vote yes.
Okay. Vicki, I don't know if we'll be voting on it.
Okay.
We're going to be, this is going to be pending business until we resolve
Okay.
what we're doing.
All right.
So it may not get finalized tonight.
Okay.
Just so you're aware.
All right. Thank you. Hello?
Hi. You have a list?
I have a list. Trying to stay, I have E D H D, so sometimes it's hard not to follow the butterflies. In May 18 of this year, you and Dick met with E D R.
Yeah.
And there was, you know, we were going to assess the undeveloped properties, they were going to do a survey before anything else was done.
It was working on a comprehensive plan.
Right.
Correct.
And then last week, there's a whole big shebang, but I hadn't heard anything about the results of that survey or plan.
That's because it didn't happen.
Okay, so we just got dropped?
We met with E D R and one of the chief, I don't know what they are, individuals to lead that had death in his family.
Okay.
And it got sidetracked. There had been efforts to resurrect it. Dick did it, our engineer did. I've been looking at old emails to try and reconstruct some of that. I just don't know if E D R is the right venue with this.
I think more my point is, instead of entertaining big projects right now before that's done, is it, you know, isn't that kind of like closing the barn door after the horse is left?
Unfortunately, the barn exists.
Right.
So, you know, you can't say everything's on hold until something happens. Love to have a comprehensive plan that would have a proposed potential use of that property, which might be exactly what they've proposed. It might be six, eight-story buildings. It could be an industry.
Our fire trucks only go up five to seven stories. I'm just saying, we may want to reconsider.
It's funny, though, you build the building, somehow there's a new fire truck in town. Yeah, right.
But if it's a big one and you need more than one...
Let's not dance, I know your point.
So the second one was a while ago. Greg had mentioned that there were 500 apartments, a little more than 500 apartments, that had been approved to be built within the village, not outside of the village, in the village. Do we know where those are?
Sure. One set is Christopher House Communities, Smokey Hollow Road. The other, you know, Morgan Apartments on Downers Street. You were talking about who the signal light was?
Yeah.
That's only half-built.
Okay.
There was legal problems for the developer, so that stopped.
Okay.
I think those are the only ones, correct me if I'm wrong, that I can know that are approved, if that's what Greg was referencing, I'm not sure.
Because that apartment plan, when it was being discussed before it was approved, you know, there used to be a movie theater in town?
Yeah.
Back a while?
I thought you meant that.
Yeah. So the plans for that development had movie theater in them, but I haven't seen a movie theater, and I didn't know if that was part of the P P D.
I don't have that in front of me.
It's like the canals that were supposed to be in Carousel, you know, when they got Destiny, they're supposed to have canals, and you can take a little boat ride around the mall. I'm like, "Where could it go wrong?" But, you know, they promised them, and there's no canals. But yeah, so I was just wondering, because I'd really like a movie theater, and I'd really like a grocery store on this side of town, because if we keep building apartments, we should keep the ability to go to the other side of town, because there's a congestion problem at the four corners and elsewhere.
Just take 680.
Yeah, or not. It's poor gas, it's four miles, I got an old car.
Yeah, okay.
I'm mindful of these things. Or a bus, better bus service. These are all ideas. That's it. I just had questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Is there anyone else? There's not too many left. Okay, then moving on to trustees' comments. I won't put you on the spot, Joe, we'll start with Aaron.
I wish everyone a happy New Year. Hopefully we can have a great year like we did last year. It's been really an honor to be on this board with everything. Watched our police department, our public works department handle in 2023, it's just amazing. Not to take away from anything, that table over there, Rick does a great job, Casino Center, Mark, we do a tremendous job with really modernizing a lot of our, you know, operations around here. Joey's really taken off with her job as a clerk, and obviously very legal work to keep us out of trouble, honestly, as a remediation of some things, so I've been very proud to be part of this board, and so I'm going to start things off in 2024. With that note, I'll stick to the agenda.
Let's stick to the agenda.
Just the agenda for me, thanks.
Agenda for me, too, and happy New Year, everybody.
Agenda.
Thank you for appointing me to the board. I appreciate it, and I look forward to serving the community in more of a capacity than I have when I was with the V F W. So I'll stick to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to mayor's comments tonight, last meeting, you folks weren't here, well, some of you were. At this point, I couldn't remember what I wanted to talk about, so it was suggested I jot notes. I have some. Jim already brought up one of them, the Main Street Grant thing, I want to make sure the community's aware of that. That provides business owners an opportunity to upgrade their facades and stuff in the community, and over the years, downtown Baldensville has benefited from this program tremendously, and hopefully it continues to do that. I also wanted to have a meeting this week with our police chief and our public works superintendent. Last meeting, we had assistant commented and expressed concern about the crosswalk on East Denise Street where the, okay, I'll call it the smoker's path is. Everybody knows what that is. If you go there when school's letting out, there are many, many kids crossing, and there are many, many cars flowing, and she expressed a concern because there had been some sort of an interaction. The police were still looking into whether the car struck someone or someone struck the car, don't know what was determined, but we looked at potential crosswalk lighting solutions. A lot of the community know that we're investigating ways to address that, that I think would improve the situation. The last thing I want to mention, it's good, you're here, Jim. I went to the Christmas Carol with my family and was dumbfounded that were three or four children from Baldensville were in there, as the kids, as Tiny Tim and all the various kids running around, was impressed to see Baldensville in the, in the whole area. Other than that, I'm going to stick to the agenda. Moving on to our department, Ash, we'll start with Bob.
I'll just, I'll just let the board, that litigation matter that we were discussing, the funds haven't come in yet, but the settlement agreement has been signed by all parties, and once the funds come in, it gets, it's going to get recorded. When it does, I will ship it around to everybody, but other, so it's going to be, follow that, I'll stick with the agenda.
And will those funds be held in escrow by your office, or will they go to the treasurer to put somewhere into the budget to pay for the activity to remove the light?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, village clerk, Joey.
I will stick to the agenda, thank you.
Let's see if the treasurer has anything else to say.
Just real quick, a couple things. Number one, I want to welcome new trustee Joe Cole. Anything you need to understand about the finances of the village, I can answer, hopefully, most questions. If I can't, you need to hold me accountable. But the second item is, there is a, there are budget modifications on the agenda for tonight. I'm here to speak to any of those that you have questions on, but I also need to add one right now, and that is, and I didn't, we didn't really know what the number was until this afternoon, but the retro pay for the police contract being finalized and negotiated and signed is going to be paid in next week's payroll. And so that number is $168,244, and it will cause us to exceed the budget in the police salaries line, and so I don't know, I know where we're going to get the money from, don't worry about that, but I don't know where we're going to get from the budget right now while I'm sitting here, but I will know by Monday or Tuesday, and I can give you an update on that, but what I wanted you to know is that you'll need to approve exceeding that line and the modification of that line to handle that, and then I'll get it from fund balance or I'll find it in another line somewhere, but the rest is just the agenda. Unless you have questions.
That'll be in the chat next week? He's been happy camper. Well, we were under a timeline, that's why I asked questions, so we're well within that timeline. We'd asked for additional nine days to settle that, because that's a lot of work on your best part.
Oh, I agree.
Okay.
I really didn't do anything.
But I think we'd settle it by a month and a half, at least.
Yeah, it was February, it was like February 15 was the deadline.
Perfect. Thanks, guys. Okay. Anything else, Mark? Moving on to our seniors.
I just want to remind folks that the food sense program is out there for anybody in the community regardless of age or income. If you're having any difficulty stretching your food buying dollars, which I know some folks are, give us a call, we'll explain it to you, or go to the village website, the information is posted there. And we're looking to our first concert of the year on Wednesday, the 10th, at 11:00 AM, so if you're looking for some music for the New Year, come on out. Other than that, unless anybody has any questions.
What's the concert?
It is called Seminole Serenade. It's actually a female group of six ladies, and they've been on a really good show. They've done holiday, Christmas-oriented shows before, but now they're sort of diversifying. This one is called Singing Through the New Year, so I think we're going to do the whole calendar, so.
Cool.
There you go.
Thank you. Come across to Chuck in D P W.
We're in winter mode pretty much for the highway, but the weather's been so great. We've got some calls and people, the guys around, still doing some trimming on a lot of the trees. We can never get to all the trees, but they're doing a fantastic job, and they're trying to catch up on a lot of that, now that we still have good weather. The parking lots, we changed it, if you remember, we changed the code here a year or so ago, the village parking lots that you can't store vehicles there, and we've had a little bit of pushback, because we're now cleaning some of the last stuff, people leave their cars there for a week, two weeks at a time, and further. So it's three consecutive days in a month that you can leave your car there, and, you know, if you use your, you know, if you go back and forth to work, it's great, you know, and then we clean the lots, and we can, we can work on, but when there's vehicles there all winter long, it just doesn't work. And some of the businesses want to use the lot, are getting a little pushback by that, but we're getting the education out, and that's not going too bad. The water park is right in the middle of, it's in the middle of an electrical upgrade, which is a huge upgrade. We're waiting on power company down, some parts for, for some of the pumps, but it's going really well. They're going to go back out to bid to do some of the fluoride thing. We had two grants, we had electric grant and a fluoride grant, and then we had some of the budget for it, and it's just a mess over there, because they're right in the middle of it, and until it gets, until it gets finished, it'll be cleaned up, but it'll be a great upgrade for that, that building. That building has had electrical upgrade, and I can't tell you how long. Some of the contractors are coming in, they're working over, just look at the stuff that they've never seen, seen equipment like that. I mean, it's old.
Yeah, it's old as the building, right?
Yeah, and it's, it's ran all three years, but it was time for an upgrade. So, other than that, unless there's questions?
You don't have the original Morse pumps pumped inside anymore.
We do, the, no, the one's outside.
It's outside.
Yeah.
Yes. Moving on to police chief Mike. Moving on to the police chief, Mike.
Thank you. Just wanted to welcome trustee Cole, you know, Joe from his time as the former commander of the VFW, very community minded, community minded individual, I think will be a good addition to, to your board. I appreciate the work of Bob and Chuck on that traffic light on Downers Street. Over the last few years, that has proven to be a real public safety nuisance, especially as the light falls into disrepair and there's been many discussions on getting it fixed. So I think this resolution is going to be a real beneficial one to, to, to the community and we'll have a, a, a good, a good solution there. So I appreciate the work on that. Other than that, I will just stick to, to our agenda, which I'll comment on at that point.
Going through the desk of archived materials in that room, I came across the Downers Street traffic corridor study, which suggested at some time considering, and you've mentioned it, a traffic light at the end of Meg's Road, that that might be something that might benefit. And also was putting one eventually at, I think, Cannon Street, yeah, a series of them. But it's interesting, you look at some of these old documents, I don't know where they belong. The bottom drawer of that desk, I can't imagine is the official spot, but whatever.
Corey, traveling along Downers Street, as most of you know, I have a relative at Syracuse Hall and I'm up and down that road quite frequently and know the challenges of, of, you know, trying to make a turn, especially a left hand turn out of there. And then Cannon Street is the next, most heavily traveled, you know, side street coming into Downers Street. And that has always been a problem area for us anecdotally, if you look at accidents, really more prevalent 30 years ago than now, it's, it is toned down, but still it's, it's a problem intersection with, with the amount of vehicles that, that travel through there. So I'm not surprised by the results of that study at all. And I'm sure if anything, it's, it's more amplified at this point.
Yeah, and I noticed they commented how it's one of New York State's bicycle routes, number five. I cycle it infrequently, sometimes winds heavy coming in on Route 31. I try to dive off Downers Street as quickly as possible.
I bicycle just the same as you and I don't spend any time on Downers Street, so I can afford it, absolutely.
Yeah, it gets narrower and narrower the farther you go.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Moving on to pending business. Got a motion adopting the proposed 2024, 2025 village budget.
No.
Second.
Any discussion?
When is this officially to be adopted by?
We could wait a meeting, one more meeting, but.
One more meeting.
Is there any problem with waiting a meeting and having people have more time to review it?
We did close the public hearing session, session as well. I'm ready to pull a trigger. A lot of hard work went into that, yeah.
Well, it's still sitting there, it's ready to be approved next meeting if people have time to review it, but.
Hope it change.
Not much.
Can I just make one comment? I'm fine if you wait one more meeting. And I'll tell you why. And it's a 99.9% chance that nothing is going to happen, but the Osaida pilot for Baldwinsville Historic Preservation LLC, which owns Conover now, I, I talked to them a month ago, they updated the pilot. It still had an issue. I, I told them how to correct it. She was going to correct it and send the new pilot out to me right away. It's been a month and I don't have it. She gave me the pilot payment through this year for them, told me what the number was. That's in the budget as a number and it's in the tax cap calculation, all that kind of stuff, but she still has not sent it to me in writing. And so I don't think anything's going to change because she does not have a history of making mistakes like that. Everything that she has told me always comes true. But I sit here and.
Would you wait two more weeks? Would that make you more comfortable?
If it doesn't make you uncomfortable, that would be fine with me. You know, because I think we could.
What is the drop dead date, the ask you pass?
By the end of the month, you have to, and so the only time would be next meeting.
Okay, but you've had the public hearing and provided enough of changes, I don't think we have to do that over again or anything like that. I just want.
Many years ago, I, I experienced a winter where there was very little snow beginning of January. And by the third week in January, there were several feet fell, 1966. You guys got to come to the board meeting.
A walk, buddy.
Oh, you couldn't walk in that one?
We have complete confidence in this budget. It's one number, you know, you get it over the phone.
Then we have a motion in a second.
So yeah, motion to table.
I'll make a motion to table.
A second.
All in favor?
Right.
Okay, it's tabled, we'll address it at the next meeting. No matter how deep the snow is. Could I have a motion approving a proposed local law to override the property tax cap for the upcoming fiscal year? Motion.
Second.
Discussion? It's been discussed last meeting by Nate and this meeting by Mark. Questions about it, it's procedural. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Okay, discussion, and I wasn't anticipating a motion, but discussion regarding a request to add a referendum to the 2024 village election concerning village election dates. And this will be on here until this board either adds it to the election or until we determine that we don't think we should. So everybody have any thing they'd like to put forth? One of my concerns if we do this is we start losing village identity. I don't think anybody's opposed to increasing voter turnout. And I spoke to, and I'm not going to remember Chris's last name, Chris runs one of those, the many village websites that are out there. Spoke to her about would she help us get the word out when village elections are, you know, not candidates, not looking for some way to push somebody's candidacy, but various ways that we can increase awareness of when elections are. So that said, I could also talk to our attorney, you know, there are three villages, I think there are, San Jose, Syracuse, maybe Tully, that have moved to November. There are two or three, I think Liverpool's one and Tom Blank down the other.
I think he's Syracuse, mate.
Maybe, I'm not sure. Have moved to June, they've gone to June. And then the rest are, are still going along with the original village election date, the third Tuesday of every March, except when St. Patrick's Day comes and that goes to Wednesday. The fathers of our state apparently were cognizant of Irish population.
But poor, ought to be Irish.
Poor turnout, we have to say, hey. Perd turnout. So that, that's what we have for us to decide, to discuss. And in all fairness, we have to do this within a reasonable timeframe so that the citizens who propose, brought forth 30 petitions, they have an option of going out and getting a set number to put it on the referendum themselves. Is that correct? So it's cleaner, I think, if this body makes a decision, one way or the other, so those individuals can follow through with their desired activities if they need to. I don't know if you can have a multiple choice referendum that says March, June, November. I don't know.
That's going to have to be that, Bob, too. I guess.
Our voting machines don't have the choices that you can make. So I, I think it would just be the board, if it's, if the board is going to adopt a resolution, that's treated like a petition for referendum to the minute it's adopted. So I think you've got to make a determination on the dates if you, if you want to do that.
I mean, some of the, the June keeps us, village election keeps you distinct and maintains the fact that we're a village. I was, I hadn't thought about this at all, then the state went and moved all elections to even years. So our village elections would occur on presidential election years. And I'm not sure where we would even turn out, how far back on the back page of the ballot before you get down to electing a trustee for the village of Baldwinsville in a presidential election.
I think they'll just work something out.
Why, I know, but we're on even years anyway, right?
Oh, right.
So we're going to be caught up, all, everything's going to be there, the county exec, everybody. It's just going to be more congested.
Bruce, what is your concern about the identity of the village?
And that. You'll have many, many more people voting in November because they're coming out to vote, let's say for a president. And then they're going to go down and fill in the little circles and start, they get past family court and get past whatever, get past the county legislators, get past the truck, the town councilman. Eventually they'll get to the village and just fill in a circle. The concerns though, to, they're not going to pay attention.
Maintain our village party, other independent party.
Not necessarily. All villages that have moved to November, our DCR, Democratic, Conservative, Republican, people have the option, yes, to keep that party if they want, but over time, I think that would be chipped away. I mean, I, I think that would happen. I'm guessing in the future, obviously.
More votes, more representation.
Those votes could also come out in June, though. And that was one of the things that the group pointed out was that November can be nasty, March could be nasty, you know, the weather and the, we have a lot of snowbirds.
And my concern, and just anecdotally, just like most of you, I talked to a lot of people in this little town and most people don't know when elections are. And, you know, historically, I don't think, we do a great job at getting the street signs out that say March is election day, you know, it's coming up soon. And my always, my only concern is that, you know, turnout has been small and the more voices there are in a, in a village where we're basically evenly representative, right? We've got just as many Democrats and Republicans and, and then.
I haven't any idea on that, Jim.
I think it's true. And then generally then there's a big chunk of independent or non, non-registered people, so I'm just in favor of more votes.
I think everyone is.
Well, I'm not, this won't sound good, but I'm not necessarily in favor of more votes.
No?
Because I want informed voters. Like I spoke last time, there is participation in democracy. Showing up to vote is one part of participation. If you just show up and cast a vote and you don't know what you're voting for, that's not fully participation. What we're doing tonight is great participation, we're here having a discussion. We don't get enough of that, we do want to encourage, I do want more people, like, what comes out in March is not enough. I feel like the school board does get good attendance at the June elections.
That would, that would partner with school board elections necessarily?
They would have, they would be different, they would be.
They'd all be, they have to be different, then?
But it's about that time, though, like you, there's enough publicity out there that people don't show up to.
But I would just counter, Eric, isn't it up to the candidates that are out there who are supporting policies and representing the village to make their positions known, thereby educating the potential voters? A comment was made at the last board meeting, it has sat with me since the last board meeting, about quality votes as opposed to quantity votes. Every vote is quality, it came out, it participated in the democracy. Sarah Diggle was not my, my civics teacher, but, you know, being a former educator myself, I just feel very strongly that that statement about quality over quantity rings of something.
Well, and even if you define quality as well informed and they're following the issues versus less informed, there's no guarantee that a small number are going to be well informed anyway. I mean, how do you, how do you, how do you judge that to say, you know, this side of the room read all the documents and this side didn't? You don't know, because the votes are the same.
And generally speaking, in this room, this is the most informed population in town and the majority of us are here and the ones that are here today who have been here last week, you're talking about a very small number of truly informed.
Well, there's people watching, right? On Twitter as well, and that's good and that's great to have. There's people that will get this on Facebook and watch this hopefully and have discussion, you know, about this and I just don't want to see, I mean, what I don't want to see is fall into this Democrat versus Republican divide that this country's become, I mean.
I'm always concerned about two things, getting the potholes filled out in front of the house, making sure the lights are on.
My first thought, my first thought about quality votes and quantity votes is having somebody interested enough to know when election day is. If they don't have the interest to even know when election day is, do they, they know where we stand? Do they figure we know what we're talking about here, or things we're discussing?
Right.
So that's my concern.
I mean, I, I definitely feel, we all feel the, the national politics and the inflammatory environment that that is, but we're not deciding national things here. We're deciding things that, see, if you ask your neighbor, yeah, they, they, they want, they generally would probably agree. We want another tree planted? Do we want sidewalks fixed? Do we want potholes done? I mean.
It's supposed to be separate. That's why it's separate.
And maybe, maybe it would help, I mean, this is just throwing it out there, but I don't know how things are worded, but maybe there's a way to word it to say, remember, no national issues are decided at this level. There really are very few. So think about what you want to do for your neighbor or what you want your neighbor to request for you. You want, you want safe, clean, growing, healthy communities. So that hits on a lot of different areas. I mean, we, we got to have clean water, if there's a water problem, we better take care of that. And I don't think anybody would object to that. That is not a political commentary, right?
So I mean.
I can't imagine anybody running opposing anything you've mentioned.
Right, right.
So then how does somebody vote?
So then they, then they vote, they, they vote on who they might know, who they have think has a good record with things. Maybe they know someone who gets more things done than someone else, than someone else they, they know. You know, if they, if they're more efficient, maybe that's a good thing for the community. I, I don't know. But maybe some of that language would, would help remind people when they're down, you know, wherever we are on the ballot, if it goes in November, which I would support, you know, have a little reminder right above that that says, you know, remember, these aren't, these aren't de-energized, nationalized, over, over-inflammatory things that you might be.
I don't hope the Board of Elections lets you put in.
I know, right? All that, all that's too much language, right? Reminders, I don't know, maybe they should, you know?
But the good politicking does. But you're getting, it's kind of lost to that national fight.
That's what I was going to say.
It's going to get, yeah, go ahead.
Everything that you mentioned is very important, it should be important to an informed voter in the village. The problem is if you're an informed voter, but 10 people come out to vote because they're against the Warren grape or they're against some social security issue or some national issue.
Right.
And then at the end of, at the end of the ballot, who's Megan O'Donnell? Or you start with Adam, that's my daughter's first name, and that's it. So.
I'll take that one.
You know, I get my point, so the things that you want to protect locally here are not lost in, in your, in your informed vote becomes 10% of that portion of the vote and.
Right, but I can't, I can't help on any issue, whether my vote is diluted by people who have done their homework or not.
Right, but that's why, that's why it is separate, at least the way I'm thinking, that if you do keep it separate, then you're dealing with local issues only.
The numbers don't, they don't support that, it had a record below town. Does, does the, does the, the village have a, a media buy budget for, for elections?
Oh, we have this budget.
Yeah, I know we have this, but I mean, you know, we don't invest a lot of. But I mean, you know, we don't invest a lot of education time.
I'd say a part of the problem to, to prove the point is that some of the numbers that we had seen were turnout before, out post-races. So really, is the, is the problem, who wants to go out and vote for something that's already determined? Or do we want more involvement from the community as far as candidates go? So, if you're, if you're interested in village politics and you wanna show, nobody's gonna come out if they don't have choices. So let's, 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 from the, from the, from the group, bring people on, or wanna be involved in this group, and that'll give people the choice and the purpose to come out and vote locally.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
I mean, having walked this community, I mean, I'll be discussing this all day.
That's what I'm afraid of.
Having walked this community, then campaigned at an election where I was running against other people, trying to become a person on this board here.
I didn't meet Eric, he even comes to my house.
I did a lot, I went to a lot of houses, knocking on a lot of doors, and so a lot of girls got these two in the cross.
How many are you?
But a lot of people don't know the March election, that is true. And it's a strange time, and it's a hard time to campaign for people who do wanna break into it, because we have a lot of conversations with people who are out shoveling their driveways. We also are a very resistant society, you know? If you try to campaign for people to, like, actually want to talk to you, open their door to you, have a political conversation, and it gets like, it can get a little dicey out there, pretending, pretending what party you're set up, you tell them you're with and what your ideas are, they actually...
You can say Hillis Party, nobody, nobody...
Well, yes, but they all wanna know how you're registered, and if you're honest about it and you try to have that conversation, that can shut a door instantaneously, unfortunately.
Well, but maybe the answer is, you know, you don't, you don't try to, I follow that. You know, you can just say, none of that is, none of that matters at this level.
Well, you can try, you can try to have an honest conversation, if you do what I try to do. Well, I'm fine with, personally, I'd like to see it, I'm fine, the rest of the board, I feel as well, but I'm fine with moving it out of, into June. More people are back in the community, give that a shot, and see how that goes. We're still getting terrible voter turnout. You know, eventually, yes, we might have to move it to November because it's a problem. And the voter turnout in March is a problem. It's ridiculously low, even when I ran, like, you know, the bump was this, it was that. And that was with somebody actually campaigning. Now, if there's a bunch of people campaigning, that bump's gonna be more, obviously, but there's still the problem that people don't know when the elections are. Uh, I don't know if a June date would help that, you know, I think it would somewhat just because there's more people around, snowbirds come back into this community, because some people do leave in the wintertime.
You can actually put yard signs out.
You can put yard signs at our, seriously, no, you're right. Yard signs are buried under snowbanks, and...
You don't have to campaign, care, and shovel, people who can get them.
I still are.
The rest of the board is fine, you know, what I propose is that we put on a referendum for June at this point in time, and we can explore that November option later on, and that doesn't prevent you from going ahead and still having, you know, your referendum. If you wanna have for November, all the power to you, go campaign for that, make it happen. You know, people can certainly demand that, and that's, you know, that's, that's democracy in action there, too, so. But I, I propose that we do a referendum for a June election.
We'll just stop for a minute.
I wanna go to our attorney. Can we get two referendums for...
I, that's, I'm not sure about that. Let's take a look at it.
Because why, what if they both get voted yes?
If they both pass? Yeah, what do you have, what do you do? Have you got six-month terms?
Can I, can I just make an observation? I, I spoke at that meeting as, as a resident, um, when we talked about it, and I still believe this, that we owe it to, to first try to get the voter turnout up. And since that meeting, I'm not aware that we've done anything. And I'm not aware that we've publicized anything more, we haven't got a sign campaign going that there's...
Something was in my comments, I was supposed to mention the election day, too.
And, you know, and so I just kinda feel like the problem in some ways could be simpler. We could be overthinking the living daylights out of this thing, and we haven't tried some of the most obvious, simple things. And so, and to the point whoever said about our budget, media, I think Jim, about budget for media, I mean, yeah, we might have to spend some money on it and publicize it and say, hey, there's an election coming up. And, you know, and no disrespect to the messenger, but we might have to put it in the post standard. And, um, you know...
My question is, is it the responsibility of the village, or is it the responsibility of the candidates who are running?
My personal opinion, responsibility of the village.
The candidates can also...
I mean, the candidates have got responsibility too, but it starts with the village. We wanna, that's like, that's like saying, do we wanna keep all the systems we have here working? The election system is one of the systems of the village, just like the water system is and the sewers are and the police are, and, and, you know, and we gotta spend some money on it.
We need one thing, too.
What's in our budget?
November, but it's June. The, the lawn signs in November are gonna, are gonna block the village office signs, because they'll be signs for everything else. If you did decide to go to June, the only signs up would be for village offices.
Right, right. True.
If you put this past November, the signs were bigger than I've ever seen before.
How long ago, how long ago was Liverpool and East Syracuse, they moved to June?
I'm not sure, really, I don't know.
Yes, so I'm trying to see how much, how, like, percentage-wise, how much more population, how much more voter turnout was in June? I would imagine more, but...
Yeah, I mean, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, 'cause we had it right after the November election, and I had looked at the, the voter turnout for those villages that did have their election this November, and I think the highest one was maybe 10% of the population. So even, you know, this is, you know, it was quote-unquote an off, an, an off year, even election-wise, for, you know, because you weren't seeing any national things. But, you know, even moving it to November doesn't guarantee that you're gonna get more...
The county race had the lowest turnout in like 10 years or something, a couple years ago. 10 or, I don't know how many years it was, ago it was. And I, I think we're gonna go through all this, I've already moved it to November and still end up with low turnouts, because there's other...
Nationally, local elections have a 10, 10 to 15% turnout maximum.
Right.
It's not just Baldwinsville, it's pretty much universal.
But we do have things we could do to make it...
Yeah, 100%, 100%.
Yes, I'm struggling to try and find out, I'm playing on my iPad. At Beaver Lake, we always would rent a message board that went down by 370, for a chance at Beaver Lake to tell you the parking lot's full, stay away. I don't know what they would, and no longer know how much they cost, but perhaps we need to invest in message boards coming into the village that say, "election March 19th."
Yeah, I was saying, thinking the same thing about...
Of course, everybody coming into the village is driving out the other side, but...
You know, if all commies of the Baldwins would be impeached, they'd be happy to donate them in the front lawn for what a sign you want to...
Right, right. And you do have a message, Baltimore, that says elections are on this date, so that all of your in-town visitors...
Absolutely.
This is a good discussion.
Did you make a motion?
Oh, I did make a motion, yeah.
Did you get a second?
I did not get a second.
Say you want one?
A second.
I'm gonna second.
You're gonna second?
I'm gonna second, because I'm gonna ask a question, too, though. Does, does that still give then, what, what does, how long do they have to get the petition in?
By March 1st.
In order for it to be on... So I haven't made my mo, I haven't voted, but I made a motion to discuss, discuss it, okay? Yeah, I'd rather we, personally, I'd rather we didn't vote and tell our attorney to clear up whether or not you can have multiple things on it. I don't wanna create a mess.
That gives discussion going, even more. That's democracy really in action, right?
That means everybody gets to come back two weeks. So we have more than just, we'll get more than just Sally in our gallery.
Yeah, we got the project still.
I don't mind, Aaron.
So now we have a motion to second. Have we had table this one?
Yeah.
Are you moving your table?
Yeah, I'm moving it. Yes. Making a motion to table it.
I would second that, so, again, so we can find out from our attorney what, what conflicting...
Okay. All in favor of tabling the motion until next meeting?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. You have an assignment, Bob. Okay. I don't know as I expected, then. Moving on, discussion regarding Papermark Island.
Sorry? It's natural coffee, wasn't that bad?
And at this point in time, we had, do not have a promoter.
Correct.
And where are we going?
Yes. Somewhere. I...
Do you have a committee? It's a, I mean, it isn't Megan, go find us a promoter.
We have, Eric and I have both been involved in discussions, you know, Mark has, has an interest, um, but he's been tied up a little bit the last, the last several weeks in trying to put our budget together. Um, but I, I do think it would make sense for us to set, get a meeting and talk about...
And Google event promoters.
And Joe said he might know somebody.
And Jim said he knows somebody.
Jim might know somebody. If anybody else out there knows anybody who might be...
Is your, is your committee open to some public participation?
Certainly.
I think it can be. I don't think there's any reason not to.
It's a public out, and people wanna bring events to it.
So this promoter would handle everything for the whole year, or just the big events? Or any, anything that's sliced out and they like it?
That's another call of yeses.
Yes to all of that.
Yeah, I think. The last couple of years, we have, we have experimented with using a single promoter to funnel all events through, whether they ran them, ran them themselves or other organizations had to go through them. It didn't necessarily work out the way we had hoped. So maybe we go back to the idea of it's open to anyone, and anyone who wants to can bring in their, whatever they need to bring in to, to have any single event. Maybe there is someone out there who would like to do a handful of events, and, but they may not necessarily have exclusivity. You know, we're, we're not shutting out any ideas at this point. We have a couple of new, um, exciting things that, not exciting, maybe not exciting, but different things that we haven't had on the island before, that, you know, this summer, that hopefully will, will attract some, some different, uh...
Unique.
People, so, yeah, we're open to, open to ideas, so...
Citizen participation would be beneficial.
Thank you. So I will work on setting a meeting. I think, I have a feeling you might wanna be invited, Jim.
I have a feeling on that, yeah.
So, and we can post it on our Facebook page of, you know, when we, when we do set the meeting and invite anyone from the public.
And actually, grab the letter and send off to this list of promoters.
Yes, that hopefully we will gather. And we do know that, that, again, at this point in the year, it may be hard for, for some of the larger promoters to do what they're good at, but, you know...
Unless you're a Rochester guy who happens to have something booked and can do the next thing.
Yeah, so...
A little bit of light, just to throw it out there. 2025, it's the 200th anniversary of Erie Canal. Is the village making any plans? Just, yes, that's the answer.
Sounds like, well, you're gonna have a committee on that, too, Jim.
It's a good thing our local history teacher's not here, because she would have a problem with the 200th anniversary of the Erie Canal occurring in Baldwinsville.
As long as the state says we are.
Yeah. Thank you. The rest of us, again, new business, motion to appoint Terry King as the chair of the planning board effective January 4th, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Terry King is very, very well, but she's gonna do a lot of the job.
She was recommended by the outgoing chair and by the attorney of the works of the planning board.
Yep, and now we recommend her, too, as a former chair of that planning board. Absolutely.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to appoint Chris Greer as deputy chair of the planning board effective January 4th, 2024, at a rate of $75 per month?
Motion.
Second.
This is a, a new position of sorts, um, as a way of explanation. When I approached Terry about taking on the chair, there's, uh, personal things that may cause her to not be able to, monthly meetings, she, this is no problem, but a big project comes before, she may need assistance. And I guess she and John had a system where she would step in in his absence, but she wanted something official commitment, so we went this route. Chris agreed wholeheartedly to do this. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Motion to accept the resignation of Roseanne Wicks from the zoning board of appeals effective January 2nd, 2024.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna motion to appoint Roseanne Wicks to the planning board effective January 4th, 2024.
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
In case anybody is curious, you can't be on two boards at the same time, so it's good.
The opportunity didn't pose itself at that time, so I appreciate that, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the planning board, Roseanne.
Well, thank you.
Motion to appoint Michael Johnson as a S, Special Patrol Officer, SPO, at the rate of $40,000 an hour effective January 5th, 2024.
Second.
Chief, is this the item you'd like to discuss?
Yes, thank you. Just for the board's clarification, uh, this position will kind of float between both Baker High and Derricki Junior High. The school district had approached us a, a little while back, and, uh, because of the workload for our two full-time people at, at the main campus, they'd asked if we could find another SPO to work, uh, to kind of go between the two schools depending upon the workload, and if one of the officers happens to be out for whatever reason or tied up, uh, they could spend more time at one school or the other. Mike comes to us, is a 20-year veteran of the sheriff's office in the custody division, you know, recently retired, comes highly recommended to us. Most recent assignment was as the training coordinator, uh, through the sheriff's office, coordinating training for, uh, the custody, the, the police, and the civil division. And Sergeant Allen completed his background and is representing his appointment, and I would ask him forward to, to approve it.
I had a question from a citizen, and so I emphasize, this is a request from the school district.
Yes.
This isn't anything we're generating.
No, right, no.
And it's fully funded by...
By the school district, yes.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F, motion to approve budget modifications as proposed in the document Budget Modifications I don't know why we have to have PDF here, but PDF. With the addition of what Mark added.
Right.
The retrograde pay for the Scotts contracts.
All, then I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there anything else anyone wants to bring up? If not, could I have a motion to pay bills as audit?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Could I have a motion to return the meeting?
Second. Second.
The closers. Any favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Ooh, joke, they're not getting this way. Thank you for coming out.